Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing. One, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. We're so close to getting it out. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, 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 testing. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Hello, hello, hello. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, 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 testing. I don't even have an option for that. There is no option. Where are you seeing this at? I don't have a host support option or anything on YouTube. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, testing. One, two, three. Testing, testing, testing. Yeah, I mean, they gotta go live. Really, all we gotta do is just go right here. And just make it public. So once you guys hit public, save it, and go back to this, uh, stream option right here, you'll be watching it. And all you gotta do is the same, same things I was telling you before. So... Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
Up to the front, that's, that's what we got it for. We need a motion to approve the agenda. It's a general business, uh, discussion, uh, joint session about the fairgrounds committee.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed likewise? Motion carries five o. Looks like I'm first on the, uh, on the agenda. And I, I'd just like to, to say and remind everybody that this is a joint discussion. This isn't one way. It's not us, it's not you. We're all together to talk about different issues. So, as we go through, uh, the agenda, uh, it's sort of a loose agenda, but we'll have interreaction as, as we go through. But I'd like to, uh, start out with, uh, sort of the history of, of the fairgrounds. Late John Miller, our mayor, was my last teacher here, and he taught me a lot about history. So I really enjoy history. But, uh, this is the best that I could come up with, uh, with the help of the, of, of our library, the Allegheny News and the Blue Ridge Sun. I tried to put together just a few of the, the high points. There, there are so many things that went into the construction of the, uh, fairgrounds that we couldn't put it all together. Just bear with me for a few minutes. In the nineteen eighties, the Lions Club Horse Show was a big event every summer. Space was hard to find in this county. It was a growing event. The high school had several large fields, so the events were held at the Davis Field, or the Woodruff Field, the baseball field, parts of the parking lot, just any place there could be horses, uh, people to park. Horse Show drew large crowds, and then the Shliners, we started having a car show. And at times, we had over four hundred cars. And that encompassed the Woodruff Stadium, uh, those parking lots, part of what now is, uh, Napco, that parking lot. So it was obvious that, um, that we needed more space. Then the Allegheny Fairgrounds was formed. It was created, and it was, I think, spearheaded by Pete Church. And that was the first, uh, chairman or president of the, of the, uh, Fairgrounds Incorporated. At that time, Bob Black was asked to contact the family of Justice Carlisle Higgins about some land the fund, the, the, uh, family owned at the present fairground site. The Fairgrounds Committee was looking for about fifteen acres. They thought that would really, really go into the future. Bob spoke to Buck Higgins about buying fifteen acres. Buck Higgins said he would talk to his sister Mary. Instead of the fifteen acres, the family donated eighty-four plus acres. And they also paid for the sign, uh, that bears, uh, Justice Carlisle Higgins' name in the fairgrounds. Thus, the fairgrounds was born in nineteen eighty-four. Carlisle Higgins was born in eighteen eighty-nine. He died in nineteen eighty. All this took place about the fairgrounds a few years later. In nineteen fourteen, Carlisle joined Governor Rufus Dowden as a lawyer. Served in the army in World War One. He served in the House of Representatives, and then the North Carolina Senate. He served as solicitor of the eleventh district of North Carolina. Served as an attorney for the middle district of North Carolina. This one I really love. Served as assistant chief prosecutor for the allied powers in the prosecution of the Japanese war crimes of General Tojo. Those were very similar to the Nuremberg Trials. The Nuremberg Trials did the, uh, the Germans, and Justice Carlisle Higgins was involved in doing the Japanese. After that, he began, uh, began, began a private practice in North Carolina, and also served as associate justice of the North Carolina Supreme Court. He was a strong believer in the family and traditions of Allegheny County. Thus, the Allegheny County Fairgrounds, or the Justice Carlisle Higgins Fairground and Agriculture Center was off and running. But the committee had no money. Pete Church headed the Fairgrounds Committee and called upon many volunteers. And I think we need to remember volunteers throughout this whole discussion. That's what built the fairgrounds. He called upon them to use their specific talents in building the fairgrounds. It's dangerous and it's sort of reckless for me to try to name some of the people who were the volunteers, but I'm gonna give it a try. Exton Dozier, John Woodruff, George Sheets, Ben Bottomley, Paul Edwards, Bob Edwards, Jerry Washington, Kemp Irwin, the Boy Scouts, and not to miss out Tommy Calhoun. He was, he started with it when the fairgrounds was born, and just recently Tommy passed away. He was the original treasurer, and he was a treasurer up until the very end. Need for seed money fell to Russell Sheets, who at that time ran the local Warpens Federal in loan savings. Russell was able to secure thirty thousand dollars from Lucy Chaddle. First project was the Black Building. Bob Black also donated funds to name the new build, to, to name the new building, the Emerson Black Building, honoring his father. He was an extension agent for years and years for Allegheny. Then came the livestock show barn, followed by the concession stand in the bathrooms. Volunteers built the fairgrounds. It began in the early nineteen eighties. Times have changed, and new situations call for changes. Today, we are having a roundtable discussion on how to better use the fairgrounds. Everyone, and I mean everyone, is encouraged to speak. In the county, we've put together a small, uh, agenda to start out with. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Michael Carter.
Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you guys for being here today, so we can, um, talk about this openly. I, I think, as we identified with what we were trying to do, is I'm gonna try and stick with what agenda we've kind of thrown out, and that should lead to other discussions as we go forward. So, with that in mind, April has a finance summary that I'm gonna ask her to share with everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. And I'm gonna pass this down for the board members. So, what I was asked to do was to go back and pull financial data from the fairgrounds, just for the past year, uh, for the cost, for the county, for the fairgrounds. So, in a summary that I've passed down, and I'll actually pass a couple down to you guys. So, this is the most current fiscal year up-to-date numbers that we do have. Uh, for electric, just for the Black Building, it was nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. For the rest of the fairgrounds, consistent of the concession stand and the campers and whatever else is needed, it was six thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Uh, water cost for the fairgrounds, four thousand nine hundred dollars and six cents. Internet, and this is just the internet, uh, monthly fee, five hundred and seventy-six dollars. Propane, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Maintenance and repair, four thousand three hundred and six dollars and thirty-four cents. Um, I did a average of the employees that normally mow at the fairgrounds, so we have a compilation of Randy's salary, a part-time salary, and Courtney's salary, because it just depends on who has the most time. Eight hours for twenty weeks, that was right around thirty-three hundred dollars for the cost of the personnel to mow the fairgrounds. Maintenance employees, we estimated about four hundred hours at the fairgrounds. That may be a little bit more, it may be a little less. That's gonna vary from year to year. So I did the same thing. I did a compilation of the four employees that may be at the fairgrounds, came up with an average cost. Four hundred hours, ten thousand five hundred dollars for those personnel costs for a year. And then our property and liability insurance on the fairgrounds facility is fifteen thousand dollars a year. So that comes out to a total of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, this past year, in talks with our legislators, with, um, Ray Pickett and Ralph Haas, when we had a visit, they, they came out to see the fairgrounds, and they wanted to see what the fairgrounds had to offer here in Allegheny County, and what was happening at the fairgrounds. We had the potential to put in a grant, uh, request with, uh, possible SCIF funds for, for our legislators to, um, consider. So, but a plan needed to be done. So the commissioners did approve a plan to be, um, done with McGill and Associates. And that did cost fourteen thousand one hundred dollars for that plan to be done. So the total cost that Allegheny County has put in the fairgrounds in the past year is seventy-one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents, that I can track. Now, I, I do think there's more. Um, just, we, we haven't put equipment usage in there and, and things like that, so... But that's a good, rough number of what Allegheny County, what the cost has been for the fairgrounds past year. So can I answer any questions about any of the numbers or anything?
Well, yeah, I asked one question. It's on water. I mean, it sho- it shows how much the, the water bill is, four thousand.
Four thousand nine hundred dollars.
I think the tam three thousand dollars for the water.
That's probably over and above that.
Are they double charging?
They shouldn't be, but like when the fiddlers convention's out there, and there's two hundred campers out there, that's a lot of water use.
Yeah, but that's not what, I mean, they charged me three thousand.
And that may have been just for your event. I, I don't have that.
That's just what I was wanting to say.
Sorry. That is not included in that number, so...
David Hemlock, three thousand?
Yeah.
And that was for a specific event?
Muscling.
The muscling.
So the, the mowing and the maintenance lines, that's only man-hours, correct?
That is only man-hours. That's no equipment, that's no gas.
Or, 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 or anything.
No, I just did personnel, because it's, it's hard for David to tell me how long equipment's been out there, and we just can't track the gas. It all comes in one bill for maintenance, so things like that.
So, I mean, the only question I would have is just, what, what is the expectation of the county in regards to what they're, that they feel like they need to invest in the, in the fairgrounds? I mean, when you budget, I mean, what, what does your budget look like in, in relationship to these numbers?
The response to that would be, this, of course, is one side of budget.
Right.
So, April, I think you also have the revenues
I do.
that the fairgrounds are taking in also, so that we can make that comparison.
Sure, sure.
So you want me to go ahead with the revenues? Okay, so...
Is everybody good on expenses?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, yeah, summarizes what, you know, it looks like. I guess my question is a little deeper than that, too, is, I mean, when you go into a, an annual year, um, and you're looking at what the, what the expected expenses are gonna be at that site, obviously, in a rural environment, in a, in a fair, in the fairgrounds, you want it to be profitable, but the, the likelihood of being profitable is not realistic in, in a lot of cases. Not to say that it can be at some point in time, but I guess what I'm really, look at those numbers, is look at what, what the difference is in, 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 in that. And what, and then is that an expectation that is, is, you know, what the expectation is when you start doing the budget, and what that looks like to start with?
Make sure y'all speak into those microphones, so they can catch the sound, so they can...
And those can be moved around on that.
Yeah, they can be moved around, they're not, stuff on the table, they just...
So, yeah, when we, when we do budget, we look at revenues and expenses, and... So, the revenues for this past fiscal year, um, not talking about any TDA grants, because the county did put requests in for three TDA grants, which was received. The actual revenue was twelve thousand and fifty dollars for this past fiscal year. And then, the year before, I just went back another year for comparison, because we know what happened with the pandemic, everything kind of stopped. And then the year before, it started kind of ramping up again. It was ten thousand and ten dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
So a number that's gonna track somewhere between ten, fifty thousand dollars
Yeah.
in profit margin. So I, I, the reality is, and I, then, then I guess my, my question really comes down to knowing that you've got that kind of income coming in, with potential of managing it in, in this little better environment to say that we could do a little better, um... My, my real question is, is knowing that the expecta- or se- or, uh, you know, we're at seventy-one thousand dollars, not with counting the, the McGill planning session, which that, that's not gonna happen every year. But if, even if you go back to saying it's sixty thousand dollars, I guess my question would be, to this body, is that acceptable? Or are you willing to forego income that's gonna cover that? Or are you willing to forego income that's gonna cover that? And are you, are you satisfied with that, and the fact that we're, we're being able to offer facility to, to the, to the county and be able to do it, uh, at a cost, but is it, is it an acceptable cost?
I don't know if it's an acceptable cost, but if you look at what it, what the revenue generates, what the cost, what they exceed, I look at different departments that we have. Very few of them can break even or pay for themselves. But, the fairgrounds does more than just this income that April mentioned. I mean, economic development is spread out over.